I have one last item on the agenda, additional economic development slash SCOEH discussion.
This is left over from yesterday's budget. We had a couple of items not addressed in the budget. One that did get addressed was LCRI that was approved in the commissioner meeting. And this is one to continue our order of course of action on providing funding for our SCOEH employee here, namely, of course, in San Francisco, so that we can take that back to the budget meeting tomorrow.
For those in the audience, we also do have Betty Riley, director for SCOEH.
Yes, yeah.
Hello.
Hello. Any questions, Brad, Dan? Not questions, no. Mike?
I apologize, I'm just trying to read the information that we got this morning, I haven't had a chance. So I was giving over what Betty presented that I have, so.
Do you also have this piece that was, that Betty sent in to Denise?
We got that last night, yes.
Great, okay, good.
Yeah, I'll put my two cents in as the economic liaison. I work very closely with economic rural development specialists, Ginger Costo, SCOEH. And the importance of that position is it's par with the economic development budget for all that she accomplishing and is working on. The most recent was getting back in Christmas time.
Something on, is that your phone question?
Yeah, I have it on silent. So, and sure, unflappable, but we need to have a discussion.
Would you like for Betty and I to run over some of the highlights of what we provided to you this morning? Or do you just want to go right to questions? How would you like for us to manage our conversation?
That's probably a reasonable, good question. Betty, can you hear us okay without us hollering?
Yes, I actually, yes, I can hear fine. Do you hear me also?
Yeah.
Yeah, primarily what we provided to you was kind of the highlights of the work that has been accomplished since last year and the anticipated work that we will be completing during the next, our fiscal year from the SCOEH perspective. The one thing I do want to highlight and acknowledge is that we have received an invitation to apply for U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration funding in the amount of $75,000, which does require a $45,000, excuse me, a $75,000 match from local funds. I do have a commitment from Clamath County and also amend the budget for City of Clamath Falls. The funding that is requesting, being requested from Lake County will supplement the balance of that EDA planning grant plus cover the expenses of having a staff person there in the county.
So can you give me those figures again?
Sure. The Clamath County is looking at a $30,000 contribution and City of Clamath Falls 25, so that will give us 55. Another 20 is needed to match the EDA planning grant, which is funds for, you know, our primary efforts. And the additional 20 that I'm asking for the, for Lake County is to cover the cost of having the staff person there and the travel expenses associated with, and most of that is in county travel. We do have some funding available from some grants that will cover some of Ginger's time. But I have gone through my overall SCOEH budget and the amount that is proposed is what we need to have a balanced budget at this point in time.
So Betty, I don't know where to go with this conversation because I don't want to make it uncomfortable for anybody, but let's go back in time, you know, Clamath County and I believe the city of Clamath Falls. During my time in office, I know Clamath County because Jim Bland and I had this discussion and Clamath County started putting money towards it a few years back. It's Clamath, the city of Clamath, I'm not so sure when they started providing it money to the program. But I guess one of the issues, there's a handful of them, but one of the issues I've struggled with for a long time is the idea that our shared SCOEH organization, it was always incumbent upon us putting money forward to begin with to have representation over here on a regular and recurring basis. It was never that way for Clamath County. Between KCSA and your organization, that was just a given, that you were there. So we talk about, the only way we're going to get a position here or a fairly frequent representation here is if the county continues to fund this. And the funding you're asking for is in excess of $10,000, more than what the highest amount you're receiving between Clamath County and the city of Clamath.
Well, combined, they're two combined, is, does equal 55,000 a year.
So I don't want to speak for any of the other commissioners, but I'll just put it in a different text along with that discussion. No discussion about the town of Lakeview, and as far as I know, there's quite a bit of work that's done. You know, we all, all the citizens are Lake County citizens, just like all the citizens are Clamath County citizens, but the city of Clamath saw a value to provide you with $25,000 while the town of Lakeview, I don't know of any discussions that you have.
There is a request into them for 2500.
Okay, well, and then you're talking proportional, which is another subject I want to talk about.
Right.
We get revenues into the county, as you're well aware of, based on population, and it's always significantly less than our bigger counterpart counties. And our dues for memberships and other organizations are also proportionate. We pay less than bigger counties do. This is a case in point where, in order for us to have an organization here, you're asking for the biggest chunk of the pie to come from Lake County still. And quite honestly, you know, this report that we've got this morning, it'd be nice if we actually had that, not just it, but any elements of it throughout the whole year. You know, we've gotten, Commissioner Kestner has asked for during, because quite frequently at our board meetings, Ginger is in attendance and we will have department updates and he will call upon her to give us an update on something that he's talking about. But as far as the communication, I mean, there perhaps is an elephant in the room here. And so it needs to be said, because if we're going to move forward with any kind of organization, we have to be able to talk about this as professional as possible, but.
Right, and, yes, and I understand that there has been a, you know, you have stated that the communication is not there. We have tried to figure out the best way to communicate. I know that Ginger was providing monthly email updates to everyone and that didn't seem to be the appropriate way to do it. So I'm more than, we are more than willing to, you know, take your suggestions or, you know, whatever direction you want to give us, as to how we can better communicate the work that's going on. We, I do, we do try, you know, only meet quarterly as a full board. But at that time, you get an update, you know, from, generally from, on the work that is being done and through the organization as much as we have time to do at those meetings, so.
Well, Betty, this is Brad, talking SCOEH here. Economic development, if SCOEH was located in Lakeview, you and your staff people would have a greater economic impact for our community than for you to be located in Clamath County. So if all of your employees moved over here, that would help our economics quite a bit. So I would like to see SCOEH have it in Lake County, okay? So that said.
Yeah.
But I also, last year, asked you for a time study and I asked you to get that to me so we would know, and I have a SCOEH hat on here, so we would know the amount of time the town of Lakeview was taking from the SCOEH position. Because of, obviously, it's a partnership and our funds that were taken this from, using the budget meeting yesterday, were down to where we've decided to spend some dollars. There isn't no room there for any other projects that we, as Board of Commissioners, can get out there. So SCOEH's presence here is taking the lion's share of this. And so I know we're the governing, half of the governing board for SCOEH, but at the SCOEH meetings, we're going to have to have this discussion. Is Lake County going to get the same benefits of having SCOEH? And having the presence of that person in Lake County?
Well.
Is it time for us, is it time for us as commissioners to say, okay, we're governing by the SCOEH, but heck with it, we're just going to go economic development our own and maybe go all local LCRI? Or Lakeview Community Partnership is coming to us now wanting to branch out to Northlake. I mean, the whole economic development thing, we have so many legs in it and I'm not sure they're all speaking together. I'm struggling with it and I'm struggling with the part of SCOEH and the presence in Lake County for, we're having to pay quite a bit. I'm really struggling with that, Betty.
Well, go back a little bit of history, when I came on, prior to coming on, the county itself hired individuals. I think one person was released right before I came on and then we hired another one and another one. And at much more cost than what we can ask for here and a lot less expertise than what we're asking for here. So I think it was your suggestion to split some costs with SCOEH to have a person here, which we do at this time.
This board never, never had it as a director position that was released with another. My, I was on the Board of Commissioners through a budgetary thing.
We were released through a budgetary thing, yes. I attended those meetings. The expertise is what really is the critical consideration here.
So, but let's just, let's talk about that because my recollection of commissioners are a little bit different. That person, we don't need to use names, was released by the board prior to both of us coming on. I don't remember us ever hiring anyone.
Well, we did go with, I stand corrected, we did go through SCOEH for two individuals.
Right, yes, that's been in this format, yes.
I'll stand corrected on that.
Okay.
But the thing is, if we hire an employee, it costs us more and the expertise is hard to get.
So Betty?
Right.
As, as a lot of other funds can be leveraged through SCOEH, I think as short term, there's some, and I don't want to get into Commissioner Kestner's world too much, but there was an add-in dollars on broadband, I know that's a short time.
Right. I'm actually, I've been working on my budget and trying to get it down as lean as I can. Our total amount, well, first of all, there is a, I'm estimating $16,000 still carried over on the broadband, of which most of that will go into direct staffing, so that will offset the position over there. The other piece that we're looking at is we are applying for some foundation funding to assist with some of the grant writing support that has been, you know, the grant programs and main, main grant support that we've been giving through, through the position over there. So, you know, that, that will help offset the overall, you know, that salary. The impact of, you know, the having the person there, you know, salary-wise is the total, the total cost of the position and is right around $60,000 a year. So what, what you are providing in support is about two-thirds of what that, of that salary position is costing. That doesn't include the amount of travel that we reimburse. So I think this last year, we reimbursed for about $3,500 in travel, primarily for, you know, travel up to the Christmas Valley and throughout the county itself. So I've tried to cut back on costs as much as I can, but, you know, that's, that's where I stand to have that position filled as a position there. It, it is actually, you know, aside from my salary, the highest, you know, highest paying position because of, you know, the skills and the background and experience that is brought to the job. I have cut back here internally to basically it's myself and Pam. Pam primarily works as special project manager. So as far as her work, it is mostly covered through the contract for the EDA program, the Woodstove Program, the, she also is the primary staff for the Area Commission on Transportation. And so very little of Pam's expenses come out of the, anything that is given by Lake County. And I think her, what I have measured for her is about $3,500 that's included in the EDA planning grant. So primarily, you know, it's myself and Ginger that are doing all the work and, you know, that is done related to the economic development. And it is, I try to be in the county on at least a couple of days during the, you know, a month at least. I have, you know, I am over there, I also do remote training with businesses and work with business clients that either come here or we do it remotely. And so it's, there is, there are services that are being provided that aren't necessarily being provided in the county, but, you know. And we have spent, you know, the last six to seven, eight months primarily focused in on getting the Woodstove money out and also working on the Head Start project, which is covered with a separate grant, you know, the funding from. You know, I have, I'm not sure how we could, you know, in many ways, you know, feel that you have, you know, where you are getting an economic development person, whereas here, KCSA has four employees doing the work that Ginger is doing over there. So, you know, from that perspective, it's really hard to compete, you know, for you to have the same type of services that Clamath County is able to have because the KCSA's budget is probably, you know, over, I think, over $500,000, of which half comes, or $300,000 comes from the county. So, so that's where primarily they are putting their funding. So it's not that, you know, I am doing here what you are getting there.
So let's take, let's take Lake County's dollars out as the picture totally. What's the obligation of SCOEH, us being the governing board along with Clamath and Partnership? What is the obligations of SCOEH to Lake County?
What is the obligation? It is to help implement the sets, the comprehensive economic development strategy. So we are, we can provide grant writing expertise and we can, that is what I provide here. I provide grant writing expertise. I provide some technical assistance to communities, the revolving loan program and management of the revolving loan program and just administration of the organization. That is, you know, the Woodstove Program, all the special projects, if there's specific project implementation that has to happen, that is placed based on where we're working. So that, that is the only commitment that the SCOEH organization makes to, you know, it's the scope of work that is provided through the planning grant. It is not a full-time staffing person at all.
Right.
And we, our role is not to be the primary economic development organization. Other than under our agreement with the county is you came and asked if we could help provide that for you. And so this is, I've been acting under the agreement that was initially put together to provide that person in, in your county, so you have someone there full-time working on economic development activities. As far as the work between the city and, you know, I don't, I can't give you exact time, but I do know that Ginger has made a very, very conscious and really good effort at reaching out to North County and also a lot of the broadband work is associated with Adalen, the other smaller communities of that direction, you know, and has handed off the, a lot of the main street work to the rare person, even though she has had some oversight of that. A lot of what I think she does within the town of Lakeview, she does partly on her own, you know, of time that she's spending evening meetings and things that she does just.
One of the things that I am, Commissioner Shown, it was his first concern that he expressed was communication. We each goes to individuals, department heads, you talk to the sheriff, you talk to accessories that are up. All we have, I mean, I mean, healthy as I am because I will walk down to talk, stay abreast, but there's no preclusion of anybody asking for feedback.
How would you like to have your information brought to you? What would be the most comfortable or succinct way that you would like to have it?
Well, Ginger, I'll say it this way, but I want to answer that and I'm going to, but I need to, so I don't forget this because I'm getting old. Betty? On the Woodstove Program, I have a question and I've only heard one side of this, but I, so I'm going to just ask it. How come we don't have Ginger doing the Woodstove Program over here?
Because the, the project management is all done under one person so that there's no confusion. It is the law of paper trail that is required and it is also working with the individual contractors. So a lot of that work is done, and all of it is done, the expertise is all reps and Pam. We found that to be the most efficient way. There's no confusion that way as to who is actually on the list and who has, you know, in the tracking of information. It is a very, very.
I'm going to interrupt you. You're missing the one confusion that is huge to us and that is our local people, the confusion they're trying to get, to take care of and they're very confused on that, Betty.
Well, let me just add, because I'm going to turn to Commissioner Kestner and asking if Shay stopped and signed, if he has yet since you've been back, okay? And I've only heard one side and I understand these things, you know, people tell you what they want you to hear. So I've only heard one side. But with that said, I've, I've been told we're down to one installer and that installer's thinking about, it's not worth it. And that installer asked me why Ginger wasn't doing it and I didn't have a good answer. Because before, I know we did some other things, but not to bog us down in this discussion about budget, but regardless, we got to find out the other side to this because if we're down to one installer and some of the nightmarish things that I heard, and I'm not taking them to the bank, but that I've heard about projects that are approved and this and that, it needs more discussion.
I would, I really need to have that feedback directly to me because I don't hear that.
Well, I told Shay when he came in specifically and he said, other installers that no longer will do it, we'd be glad to talk about it. And I said, well, I've heard what you had to say Shay, please share that with Commissioner Kestner when he gets back. And I thought he was going to sing by now, but.
About Shay who?
Shay Robinson.
And his side, I'm not real sure because we're spending almost $30,000 through him every two weeks.
Betty, there's a better, better time and better place to have this discussion. But I just wanted to ask that general question. It was a positive for Ginger that they thought if you met her, working with her. We'll have that more fully in a little bit. I want to go back and address Ginger's question. Last year, at this same time, we had some similar type scenarios with what we're doing here. And as, as much as I appreciate the liaison work that Commissioner Kestner has done, we made it really well known, Ginger's not our employee, she's your employee. In between the three of us, because Commissioner Kestner is right, and for a period of time, and it's been a while, I'll take ownership and my responsibilities. It's been a while since, since I walked into Ginger's office, but it's been like there isn't two other commissioners. I shouldn't say that. I should only say one because I don't speak for Commissioner Winters. So to answer your question, Ginger, it's just like everything that you do on behalf of this county is important to me and I just need to know periodically.
And how would you like that information brought to you?
You just stop by my office when you walk by it and Commissioner Kestner's not there and you walk right back past it. Just stop.
So you want it, you want it face to face?
Yes.
Okay.
I want to have a relationship so that, you know, things that spur the moment that come to my mind, I can share with you and see what we can do about it.
I will give the one example of my frustration and Betty, you were a part of this and it was a business that went in here, I still know nothing about, it was happening. I was getting hit by the public, asking all kinds of questions. I said, I do not know nothing about this and still to this day, I don't know exactly what happened, how it happened, or whatever. As commissioners, we need the information because we are political figures and I'll talk politics. We get hit out in the public. We need to be part of it also. It's not just one. So that's a specific example. I get hit.
Well.
I go to a function and, and somebody says, they know more than I know about what's happening in the courthouse and they look at me like, you don't even know this is going on? No, I'm sorry, I don't. And that's the extreme example.
Right, and that, that one is an extreme example and we, you know, offline, I can explain part of what happened with all of that and I can appreciate your concern about it. And I sometimes find myself in very uncomfortable.
That's directed at Betty, not you, Ginger, because I had that conversation.
Oh, I know, but what, but what I want you to know is that sometimes I find myself, as well as I'm sure you folks do sometimes, in a very uncomfortable situation of having information that has been given to me confidentially, that I have been sworn on as staff of bibles as a sort of euthanasia, to not divulge until the party is ready. And I feel like I have to honor that to a certain degree. So, you know, I, there are times when it's difficult to keep that information confidential and I, you know, I understand that. But that one situation was definitely outside the bounds of what would normally be going on and it's, it's an interesting issue still, so.
But when it comes down to, apart from confidential information, asking the question. Like, for instance, you can ask two things, I have no idea because I don't know what you're working on, but it's communication, communication. If you want to know, ask and help.
I consider my position a confidential position and when we hire through contributing money of a director and an employee, that it should be at any time comfortable to come to the main administrators of the county operation to consider us confidential, each and every one of us, absolutely. And when it comes to economic development within our county, I think that we have, all of us have something to bring to that.
Okay, yeah, and exactly, because those things that's red rock, I get, I always get information from the town. And exactly, because those things of Red Rock, I always get information from the town.
I fully, the way we work as a board is that information can flow to us from somebody else in a confidential manner. So, I don't go talk to you about it, but who you're working with, they can talk to me, i.e. Betty, Ginger, vice versa. If I'm working on something, that's why it flows to us individually in a confidential manner. So, that's my take. Apparently, there's something even more unique about this. So, that's one example. But I want to get back to budget and trying to find monies other than Lake County dollars to have SCOED presence in Lake County. What percentage of dollars we can contribute to having the presence of SCOED here? If it, and I was the one that's trying to get economic development back here in a presence can, absolutely, in this partnership there. As dollars start gaining more and more cost here, I really sort of rely on SCOED to start helping us try to reduce our costs to keep that presence here, because it is a partnership. So, today, I think we're at that crossroads of we have the presence here. Our funding, in my mind, and we each, individual commissioner has ideas on the dollars we're using, lottery dollars, the lottery dollar, economic dollars, we're starting, that one's starting to go down as far as what we're putting out, it's impacting it, we use it for special projects and other things other than just this. So, I really would like, I'm interested when Betty said there's 75,000, and I'm not exactly sure that she's leveraging, it has to have a local match, and then I heard there's 16,000 on the broadband, so with the other match over in that county, I would think she's almost at that match maybe with that administration. But what other dollars is there out there to leverage through SCOED?
I just, so I can take
If it's the wood stove program, and we're able to leverage some of that administration dollars over here and enhance for it to be on the ground and have a local person, be able to have local people go to and get the answer.
Well, I'm on the same boat there.
Yeah. What are we missing to add dollars for operations that we have right now? And how do we make them even better? You know, as far as that
Just so you know, the wood stove program is winding down, and I have a minimal amount of dollars to close out that contract, and so that, I do not anticipate any of that fund being available again unless there's some money that comes forward that I'm not aware of. So, the only funding that is available for staffing is either related to our EDA planning grants, our fee-for-service work that is very specific to the, you know, delivery of services through contracts, and our revolving loan fund. And I, you know, I'm trying my best to leverage as much in other grant funding as I can, but it is not, it's not easy to access any types of funding outside of what we have now. Like I said, we are looking to foundation funding, that is through our nonprofit arm. So, I, we have been looking and trying to find funds through the nonprofit side, but the primary funding really does come under our EDA planning grant for the work that is done, and that work, and out of those matching funds and EDA planning grants is also primarily my salary too. So, it's not just the position over there. So, it's a split between the two.
So, Betty, can I ask you a quick question? It's on the subject, but it's off, but we're talking about wood stoves. Can I get a copy, a spreadsheet of all of the wood stove installation information?
Yes, there's over 200 projects, but I have that on my computer, and all the information of how much we've paid out for what, yes, I keep a track of that, I have to report on that twice a month to IFA.
Okay. Thank you.
That's accepted. If you need information, just ask.
Yep. No, I have no problem sharing anything. In fact, I did make a presentation to the towns of Lakeview at their request on the wood stove change-out program, because they had some questions about, you know, how the funding was being allocated. And we are, you know, there is a commitment and an obligation to spend as much money in Lake County as we have and are spending here in Clamath County. And to this point in time, we're down to completing 90 projects in Lakeview and 118 in Clamath County, so we're almost caught up in matching the number of customers we've been able to service over there.
Great. I'll look for that report. I'm curious also, when we're talking about funding, you mentioned that you've got a request into the town of Lakeview for $2,500, correct?
Mm-hmm.
How did you arrive at that figure?
Well, I really didn't know what to ask for, you know, I tried kind of looking at population base and equity, you know, as far as that is concerned, I didn't have a formula. So, if you have any other ways that I should look at it from the perspective
Well, I agree with you, Betty. I agree with you, what you just said. Clamath County and the city of Clamath proportionally, you could say that the 10% that you're asking the town for versus, it's the 10% of what you're asking the city of Clamath for. Yet, yet on the county side, you're asking Clamath County for $30,000 and Lake County for 40, 133% more.
And again, it is because of the position that is being filled over there, and that is
But that gets back to the point, SCOED is a two-county operation, and yet the only way we can have a physical presence here is if we fund Clamath County, it's not the case.
But I think, I don't think you could compare what I do for Clamath County to what is being, what the effort that is extended in Lake County compared by the SCOED organization. I think the issue is more of, I've considered the position, if I help cover the time that Ginger is there with my EDA funding, but it is not something that I do here in Clamath County. And so, in Clamath County, we are not outdoing the business retention efforts, we're not outdoing the assistance to, you know, the individual, meeting with individual businesses and the efforts that Ginger is providing over there. That is being done by KC. So, if you get, you know, if you look at the type of work, you know, my job is basically an administrative job. I have to make sure that we are in compliance with all of the programs that we have, including the reporting on all the loan programs, which I do that, I am the underwriter for the loan programs, no matter where, which county it comes from. And so, I have to administer that piece of what we do. I also have to administer, you know, and provide administration, you know, staffing and that sort of thing, all of the bookkeeping is done through here. So, I am rarely out of this office here in Clamath County. The business community in Lakeview sees more of me than the Clamath County business community.
Now, my guess earlier is that equality and quantity of services, because how, more how did the person in Lakeview then thought it would be to Clamath?
So, I have one thing I wanted to make sure that is understood too, is that there is, I'm sure you all appreciate and understand leveraging, you know, fund, you've got, you've got a position, or you've got funds, and then you can take that and you can leverage more. One of the things that has happened here with the town of Lakeview in the last two years, this will be the second year, or maybe the third, actually, I guess we're going on the third year, where because of the work that I have done here with the Lakeview Community Partnership, we have leveraged, I think the first year was $2,500 from the town to go into that effort, which would be time that was being paid to someone else or for general administration that I'm not doing. And last year, it was $5,000. $2,500 was to the organization to use as they needed for the organization, $2,500 towards the position for the RARE coordinator, so that my time was not being spent doing that, it was their time doing that. And that request has been made again this year for $5,000. So, those are dollars that would not have otherwise been generated for Lakeview, and that take the burden off of me being in Lakeview or doing that work in Lakeview, if that makes any sense.
Is that $5,000 coming from the town of Lakeview?
Yes, we had $5,000 last year.
So, I'm just, you're saying generated, the town of Lakeview paying to the Lakeview Community Partnership, right?
Right, that's correct.
So, it's been paid for the partnership that's representing. I guess I
Okay, so
It's not dollars coming from anyplace else, it's coming from within right there, but
I'm not following. But my point is that time that I was spending initially with the partnership to get them off the ground is now being taken, part of that is being taken by the town of Lake. What I'm saying is that if my position was not here, that leverage would not happen. Does that make any sense?
Yeah. They've been able to form as a nonprofit, they got their board, and they're moving forward.
Yes, that's correct.
So, they're also looking for dollars to keep
That's correct. And so that, so that the downtown economic revitalization program is not all about Ginger doing that work, it's about the community and other folks, volunteers in that board doing it. Right now, what I'm doing is moving into the northern part of the county to do the same type of work and bringing along folks in those areas to, coaching them to be able to do that same work, if that makes any sense.
That's where there's not an official request, but a potential request on a RARE student or
Correct, that's correct.
And first back to what the county base responsibility in that concept is that we help facilitate these organizations to get up and going, and then let them go on their way, is promoting and facilitating.
Yes, correct.
So, I, you know, I'm understanding the constraints that you have with budget, and I'm, you know, I guess I'm trying to decide what it is that you need, you know, how, a reduction of what I'm asking, I'm assuming, but, you know, how much? Because I, you know, at this point in time, I need to get, I haven't been able to call my budget committee from SCOED's perspective until I was a little clearer on what resources I had available and what, how I was going to have, how I was going to be staffing the organization. So, I need that clarity to move forward.
I'm not prepared to say a dollar amount at this time, trying to, in my mind, think of the programs and projects and other things that hit, potentially hit that fund that we take these dollars out of. Betty, I'm not, one commissioner, I'm not prepared to really say a dollar amount right now. If you compare to, you know, I would like to see, in Lake County, we represent a whole county inclusive of the town, but $2,500 contribution from them seems pretty minimal for the amount of work that it takes within the town of Lakeview on economic development, because of, just by the whole hard facts, the highest population of Lake Counties in the town of Lakeview, for the most part. And that's where most of the businesses are and our two biggest industries. So, the value for the town along with the county is quite big for economic development and for having that expertise and everything. So, you know, that's where I was trying to get last year, Betty, was trying to build that partnership, have you build that partnership with the town budget-wise, and the value of SCOED in the presence of economic development here, financial buy-in of that is where I was really going with it. So
That falls on our shoulders too, as members of SCOED, if you have that discussion with the town.
Well, and Commissioner, you're touching on something, I think, you're touching on something very, very true. As the governing board for SCOED, we need to probably be a little bit more vocal, and we might need to go set up at the table and say, "Okay, this is what we expect out of representation from SCOED in Lake County." I don't, I'm not, I'm probably wrong, but I think there's at least three positions in Clamath County, executive director and two others, you know?
You mean on SCOED staff?
Yeah.
I have a 15-hour-a-week bookkeeping person that takes care of all of the bookkeeping, and I have Pam.
Okay, so
And myself, so
You know
Primarily, it is, you know, I've got one person here and one person there, and I try to go between the two.
I guess, then, your question is, there's another discussion away from the board of county commissioners, to when we draw on our behalf, to a SCOED board giving the board to have that discussion, is this, what do we see and where do we go on this SCOED?
And that
I should always be with you.
And so, Betty, I'm going to jump in here on our dollars. Commissioner Kestner asked the question yesterday, we were at, I think, Denise, 49,000?
40,946.
Well, we were at 49,000 of money after the LCRI.
Correct.
Correct. Then we've committed as a board 5,000 to the youth program.
Correct.
So, it puts us at 44. Commissioner Kestner's question is the chambers and the fireworks contributions, we haven't made that decision this year. So, we're at 44,000. Whether we assume that we are going to fund those or not, it's only 44,000. Betty's request is for 40,000, that leaves us with no discretionary money in economic development for the year.
Correct.
So, that's where I'm at right now, is I do want to have that discretion, because I think we've all felt good about our opportunities to help in different areas that, you know, have came up, that we couldn't necessarily plan for. So, special projects, as they come up, what that figure needs to be, I don't know, but we have no more than 44,000 right now. So, that's the given starting point.
Yeah. There's, I appreciate that, and there's always other options, always we've worked to treasure as being the experts to cover some things, but it is nice to have some discretionary funding. The partship between some of us is some people are a number who are in and in product area, in that the overall services is way above in Lake County by SCOED than it is in Clamath County, just because of having the station here and multiple outreach that SCOED staff does across all counties. And it comes down to prioritization, what is the biggest thing for you, like, as far as economic development? I would have the same discussion on the LCRI, but I wasn't here on that meeting. Okay. So, no decision at this time. Any other thing, Betty?
No, I will go into our annual budgeting meeting next week with data, some budget, and hope that I can fill the gaps. But if, without any other direction, I guess I'm hearing a status quo for now.
So, what I would, individual commissioners, I'm not putting a number out there. So what I would, individual commissioners, I'm not putting a number out there, Betty, you need to find all the money you can to try to help go towards this position, this SCOED position.
Right.
Where it's a town of Lakeview or-
I have spent, yeah.
Whatever there is out there.
Yeah, I, we've, I'm working on grant applications, that's primarily what I've been doing. And it's, yeah, nothing's sure at this point in time, so, but-
You should have been here earlier, Betty. What do you think about Office of Emergency Management? They've got a hard name.
I, you know, don't have expertise in that side of things at all. I have, you know, I know there's a lot of, lot of issues around that one. It has been since I was, you know, I have been to several meetings in, when I was in my prior, down to California, related to, you know, fire safety and stuff. And that's a whole world of itself that I don't really feel like I have any expertise in, so.
Well, it sounds like we're going to let you go for now, Betty.
Okay. And, you know, like I said, I'm trying to figure out how to get a balanced budget or what and understand the priorities. And I, I really, part of my concern is whether or not we should be meeting more often at SCOED to be able to have more of these discussions because I feel like the two hours we have every quarter are not getting to the level of discussion that you're saying you need to be having.
Well, and a lot of the discussion needs to be with your executive board, brought to the full board of SCOED, Betty.
Right. And I-
And you shouldn't be meeting monthly on your executive board.
Yeah, I do meet with him on an absentee basis and usually that's once a month or sometimes twice a month, depending on what's happening.
I haven't been to a-
But that is happening.
I haven't been to a SCOED meeting, plus other.
So could I ask, could I ask a question? So do we, does SCOED not have any direction from the commissioners at this point about the budget request? And it's now in our court to come back to you? Or are you reviewing it and going to bring something to SCOED?
Well, we have it on to bring back through the Budget Committee on Thursday.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Do you have a time for that tomorrow?
It will be at the end of the session. We'll bring it back. We have three. Do we have three that we're bringing back?
I think it was 3:30 or so, but we are behind on some stuff, so it probably goes to 4 o'clock plus.
So it would be a good idea to be here at 3?
That.
Okay.
That, unless we decide, the potential of that, that our Ginger is, potential is for us to put an amount in, separate it out from projects and programs that we have it in there now with a large sum. Potential is for us to make a decision just prior to adoption as we look at other potential hits to that fund. As we have some pretty significant things going on within our county right now.
Right.
And I, these guys are probably don't know what I'm working in my mind right now. So-
So I'm just-
So it's not absolute that tomorrow you will know exactly what the number is going to be in my mind, but I'm just speaking.
That's, that's fine. I'm just trying to get a handle on a time.
But I definitely, very succinct in that. You guys need to look at every bit of funding you can to try to go in towards this other business video or audio.
So again, my question is time tomorrow.
We, no, we look at the-
Probably your guess that is to ask me.
Yeah, because the-
I can do that.
And we, you know, we'll have a better view as we start tomorrow morning.
I understand.
And that can be a reach out to you at your office, a text, whatever it is.
Sure.
I think it's difficult to say right now.
Okay.
And do you need me to be physically present again tomorrow?
Betty, that's your decision. You know, what we have to respect is the fact as a budget committee, the lay members, we're not asking them to make a decision.
Right.
We're asking them to either concur because it makes sense to them with any of our budget proposals.
Right.
So tomorrow's meeting is not going to be, in my estimation, a meeting where we sit around as a budget committee and talk this over. I mean, if that's what's decided that they want to do, I know they believe their role is not that. So-
Right.
We'll either have some, we'll either have some ideas individually on our own that we want to propose to put in there for now, or we won't.
All right.
As far as the time tomorrow, with your tenure in my hand now, on paper, open request and approval at 11 o'clock. Literally, we need that enough with that backlog, I'm sure.
Yeah, I would, I would refer to Ann.
Yeah, because we have, we have two or three things that we're going to revisit, yeah. So, okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Betty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're, we're at 1:20. We do have two additional items. I think we're, I think we're good on the department updates on this.
I want to get just a real quick one.
Okay.
It's super good, we're excited. The graphics people did come over the weekend and install our wraps on our two vans that are utilized at the Senior Center for Public Transit. I love public transit, so, anyway, I sent everybody pictures. I did send Jimmy some of we're going to get together and kind of talk about how that all came about, that it is ending our ladders grant funding that we got. So I'm just super excited, so.
Very good. So liaison updates, I was going to throw three things out really quick. AOC Public Lands and Ledge Committee. Next Monday, Mike McArthur called me, I've been working with Ann's, I think you're all aware of, on all the, all things to do, amendments to counties, just in generic terms. Going to have a great handout for the Ledge Committee, but Gil Riddell also called because the, just from his point of view, it feels like, he said it would be good if you could be here. And I've not been attending those meetings and I'm part of the Ledge Committee. So between the two, I will be at that. The Whitley meeting, our next one's scheduled in mid-June, we had a conflict before. I still don't believe I'm going to be going to it, but it's in B.C. And the WIR meeting, they've asked me to speak at that, which is going to be up in Sunning River. Our Ledge Director, Deborah Cox, and then our new assistant or legislative assistant director for Public Lands, I talked to Jonathan again this morning. We were able to do some really good work through Senator Wyden's office earlier this week on SRS and Jonathan updated me on the hearings yesterday. No decisions have been made, but we're moving in the right direction with Secureable Schools. And as far as the WIR, he mentioned that as well, just to follow up. And so I'll be speaking to the WIR group. And I told him I actually wanted it to be more of a question and answer session, me talking to them about things they don't really care about, but more importantly, me trying to answer things that they may be interested in as far as what Whitley has been doing and my representation of the county's national. So I'll stop there.
I haven't prepared, even in my mind, anything to speak about. So I'm going to, it's quite free.
I'm hungry.
I'm hungry.
I had to give myself to it. Thanks. I was asked to be on a Oregon Department of Forestry Smoke Management Review Team because I work with the Smoke and EPA stuff on their quality here. So I told them over. Also, while I was gone on family matters back east, I was contacted by AOC to be a member on their local official advisory committee to DCLC, Department of State Lands, not the State Lands. And because in my experience with, I haven't been there, but mostly my experience is SageCon, work with LCDC on that one. And that's where I was at Monday.
I'm comfortable staying in the building when you take them out the climate.
I've got a workload, I'd be happy to share it back to you.
Keep us informed on the, depending on LCDC or L, whatever it's called.
LOC.
So it might be a little bit, so that, what of that AOC, is it a committee, subcommittee?
It's a committee formed by the state as a advisory to the commission on LCDC, the LCDC Commission. But the AOC has insisted on having local officials, because it is local official. So we got two city folks there, one from Metford, one from somewhere, Larry Gibbons of Umatilla, and they wanted somebody for the southeast region of, or, but they called me while I was driving. I said, no, I'm over, I'm slummed. And then Larry calls me. Can't like Mary Market, can't say no to Larry.
So you advise, you'd be advisory group or basically policy for?
Especially on bills and things going to Ledge Fletcher. But also when the commission has topics of discussions, they want feedback on the local officials. So it's a two-part. One is essentially, one is feedback on, through the commission on local concerns. It's Hannah. Over here on me. I'm trying to learn on some finding things, but you know, all this in government, there's so many layers, so many layers. And if you don't participate-
I'm hungry.
If you don't participate, then you get what's given to you.
So I'm going to adjourn our meeting at 1:27. And I'm listening.